Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the July 18th, 2017 Pulse Falls City Council Meeting. We started the evening with a budget workshop and are now entering regular session. Shannon, please note that our council members, with the exception of Councilor Thorson, are present and she is excused tonight. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, I do have a couple announcements. First, I will also mention there are three public hearings tonight, and if anyone wishes to speak on any of the public hearings, our forms on the D I S in the back, please fill them out, turn them into Shannon, and we will let you talk to us. The Pulse Falls Police Department is looking for golfers for their annual K-9 Golf Tournament this Friday, July 21st at Prairie Falls Golf Course. For tournament players, check-in is at 11:00 a.m. and tee-off is at 1:00 p.m. Dinner is included for paid golf entrants. If you are not a golfer, spectators are welcome at the tournament, and K-9 demonstrations, as well as bidding and the silent auction, will begin after 1:00 p.m. All proceeds benefit the department's two-team K-9 unit. For more information, visit the PD's website at www-postfallspolice.com. And if you haven't noticed, this is road construction season. As my son always says, there's two seasons in North Idaho, winter and road construction. To stay informed for your daily commute and when possible, avoid those areas. To possibly avoid those areas, you can check the city's Facebook page for daily updates and the city's website for access to maps. And I know we've had some good feedback, Kit posts, and Stephanie posts the streets that are under construction or being chip sealed, et cetera. We've had several positive comments from that. People appreciate the updates, so look to the city's Facebook page for more information. The 25th Annual Relay for Life of Cootney County is Saturday, July 22nd at McHuman Park in Coeur d'Alene. Relay for Life is a free community fundraising event for the American Cancer Society. John Manley, I says, introduce John Manley Planning Manager with an announcement about the comprehensive plan update, open house, and workshop.
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson. So what I have here is the agenda for the open house that's scheduled for July 26th here at the Rotunda. There'll be the open discussion, display board, part of it will be from 4:30 to 6:30. 6:30, there'll be a presentation, and then at 7:00, there'll be an activity. The intent of this is to start delving into the future land use map elements of the comprehensive plan and get an idea of how future growth may be affected with potential future zoning designations. When you look at this update, this is more or less going to be a new comprehensive plan, and we're going to have a new zoning code. So participation and public input is highly valuable. We're going to be adding potentially up to 55,000 people to Pulse Falls in the next 20 years. So just getting the word out, and hopefully, we can get as many people there on the 26th to help guide growth.
Any questions, John? Thank you, sir.
Right, thank you.
Also like to mention that last night, the city council held a workshop on the transportation master plan. John mentioned some projected population growth numbers. We looked at the transportation master plan, year 2020, 2025, and 2035. And what was interesting and somewhat scary is that the projected population of our fair little city in 2035 is expected to be 90,000 people.
Ninety thousand.
And it's absolutely unbelievable when you think of that type of growth. But oftentimes, people come in on developments, proposed developments, zoning, et cetera, and ask if master plans or transportation studies have been done. This is a tool that the city does utilize and it is being updated. It's been, what, Bill, 10 years since it was updated?
Yeah, it's actually been longer.
Okay, about, I think it was 14, I think it was 2004. So this is a much-needed transportation master plan update, so good information was passed on. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Could you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the June 19th, 2017 city council meeting. Item B is payables, June 13th through July 10th, 2017. Item C is request to auction four vehicles from three departments. Item D is Woodbridge South Expo 8th Master Development Agreement File Number S14-02. Item E is construction improvement agreement for Columbia Estates. Item F is construction improvement agreement for Montrose 9th Edition. Item G is construction improvement agreement for Foxtail 3rd Edition. Item H is construction improvement agreement for Northern Plains 2nd Edition. Item I is construction improvement agreement for Woodbridge South. Item J is construction improvement agreement for Viking Estates 1st Edition. Item K is Tullmore 6th Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item L is construction with TO engineers for a reused property site development plan. Item M is contract with Corello engineers for an ultraviolet disinfection system review and training. Item N is Bosseth, I can't say anything, Bosseth Annexation Findings of Facts and Conclusions. Item O is purchase of an equipment trailer for the Park Division from Hoover Trailer. And item P is contract with BCR Land Services for Tullmore Park Utility Service Connection. Item Q is contract with BCR Land Services for excavation labor and materials for Sportsman's Park. Item R is contract with Evan Ferguson Concrete for curbing and sidewalk labor and materials for Sportsman's Park. Item S is request to auction various electronic equipment from the police department. Item T is contract with Raymond Smitana for construction phase services, Phase 1 and 2 Sportsman's Park parking and road drainage. Item U is contract with Frontier Communications for 911 Telephone System Replacement.
And I think with that, we just broke a record for the longest consent calendar that's ever been presented. I do have a couple of questions. First, under payables, not a question, it's been corrected, but in case any of you looked at it, under the mayor and council expense line, there was a expense for tree removal at the library, and that was a miscoding. I asked Shelley why the mayor and council's budget was being charged for tree removal, they had the wrong department on, that has been corrected. Do have one other question, I know Brian or Dave, whoever would like to answer, and this is on item P. And it may be legitimate, but I'm looking at the budgetary proposal for Tullmore sewer tie-in, and I'm looking at $11,020 for digging the ditch and $7,000 for filling it in. And I don't know, it just seems high, so I'm hoping it's a very long ditch.
Well, it's actually not a long ditch, but it's a complicated ditch and a deep ditch. It is where the utilities were stubbed off with the contractor for the Tullmore Park Basin, and this is to tie it into the sewer line at the lift station. So they will be removing the fence going into it. It's fairly deep, 15 to 20 feet deep, and you're going through other utilities that they have to work around. So you have to bring in the shoring. The contractor for the car basin did not want to touch it. And I can tell you, lots of contractors did not want to touch it because it is a little more complicated.
Okay, that's good, I appreciate the explanation, but when I looked at 18,000 to excavate and fill in, it sounded high, but I understand the challenges with it. And I think that was my questions, I wanted to beat you to it, huh?
What, you knew I had to have questions?
I thought you might have a question.
I got, I got several.
Okay.
Shelley, on item C, the surplus, no, it's not cooter equipment, the vehicles.
The four vehicles, yes.
Yeah, the four vehicles. I noticed that the mileage on these vehicles is not that high. I mean, I know the vehicles are old, but who determines when they kind of reach their useful life?
Our fleet manager does, and he has a spreadsheet that he tracks the cost of maintenance on the vehicles and what it's costing the city annually. And so they have a spreadsheet where they weight the cost of the various vehicles the city owns, and the ones that cost them more money kind of rise to the top and we start replacing those out. And so it's determined based upon the cost of the vehicle to the city.
Okay. Also, there was something in there about UV disinfection review. There was a bid for that. Russ, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
John.
Sure, John Beecham, Utilities Manager. The contract is with Corello Engineers. Corello's on our list, our pre-approved roster for engineering services related to wastewater treatment. And UV disinfection is what we use to disinfect the wastewater before we put it back into the river. This contract is really three parts. The first is for a system review, excuse me. Corello Engineers recently completed a nationwide project where they went to a bunch of facilities with UV disinfection, and they reviewed just to see how they're performing, what O and M recommendations they could put into place to improve their system, and what they might be able to do to save money. It actually costs us, I don't know if you guys know this, but it's $20,000 a month in electrical cost for the, to run the wastewater plant. UV disinfection is one of the major components of that. So if we can find a way to turn that down a little bit and still disinfect the wastewater, we stand to save quite a bit of cash. So part of it is just to bring them in, use what they've learned in their audit process throughout the nation to give us recommendations on how we could operate better. Second component is for staff training. We have a bunch of new water reclamation operators on staff, and many of them have never had formal training in how UV disinfection actually works. So we're going to have two nationwide experts on site. The thought was have them give our guys a class, take half a day of our staff time, but it'll also provide them with CEU training to maintain their licenses. And then the third thing we're tacking on while they're in town is to present to Russ and Bill and I and our management staff on what to look for when we go to upgrade this UV system in about three years. We're going to kick design off on that project here in November, December. So we'll be able to look toward the future and make sure we're asking the right questions as we design that.
Okay, great, thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. This is for the chief on the 911 system. I was just curious, when, this is an upgrade to that system, it's going to cost about $100,000?
It's an upgrade to the system, I think it's a little over $100,000, and this is funded through a grant that we got through the Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission, so it'll all be grant-funded for the upgrade.
Oh, I like that. And I missed that part of it, so I had a question, too.
We'll also be partnering with Bonner County on this project, too, and they also received a grant, so the entire project is all grant-funded.
Awesome. How often, how often do we upgrade that?
Well, typically, you're upgrading those kind of systems every five to seven years. This one, we're upgrading a little sooner because of our partnership with Bonner County, but again, it's all grant-funded, and so it just makes sense to do the upgrade now.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Thanks, chief. Anyone else? That entertain a motion?
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next order of business is public hearings, and as I mentioned earlier, we have three. The first public hearing is on the property exchange with Cootney County. And Mr. Wilson going to be presenting?
I can do that very thing.
I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. John is putting up on the overhead for us depiction of the two properties in question. Recently, the city acquired the area in green up there that's marked City Parcel. The idea of that acquisition was to actually complete this swap with the county to allow them to have some additional parking to service their vehicle licensing division that they're hoping to get up to speed here in Pulse Falls. So we are proposing to exchange the area in green for the area in blue. As I said, the county then will have some additional parking to serve their facilities. The area that the city is hoping to obtain, the idea ultimately is to put that back into productive use in something that's going to generate tax revenue, bring business and jobs back into the downtown area. And that piece would be the next, the next step in this is identifying how best to identify a potential user for that site and getting it back into productive use. That's, that's the gist of what we're up to. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Wilson? Thank you. That would be the staff report and the opponent, we are the proponent. Is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
I will close that public hearing.
I had moved to approve the property exchange with Cootney County.
Second. Motion several seconds, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up is Staples Vacation, and I will open that public hearing. Mr. Manley.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Jacobson and Council President Wilhelm. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the city of Pulse Falls, introducing the Staples Vacation, case file VAC-17-01. The owners are Douglas Bosseth and Copper Basin Construction. They own different parts of this requested vacation. The applicant rep is Tri-State Engineering. The requested action is to review and approve the vacation for a portion of Staples Road. This map isn't real clear, it's the vicinity map, but you can see here in the red hatch, the area that is being requested, just a little bit southwest of Grange and Chase Road. So what you see here, this is an alignment exhibit where you show how, at one time, Staples Road was a gravel road, and it kind of came up through, from the southwest to the northeast to Chase Road. That gravel road's since been improved, and so now the improved portion of Staples Road goes along a similar direction, but with the recent development of Country Meadows, it now shifts and goes more directly east-west to Chase Road. This portion right here, which, I'll show another map here. So that portion that you see highlighted in orange, that is a temporary fix until the ultimate alignment of Genesec Loop to Grange Road, which I'll have some additional images to make that part a little more clear. So the intent is, with this vacation, allow future development in that, at such time, this 20-foot wide improved road section that's currently there will be reduced as a pedestrian access, and it will be a utility easement and pedestrian access corridor. What you see in yellow is the potential Genesec portion that would be extended to the north, with red being the extension of Grange Avenue to Chase Road at some time in the future. This right here is the exhibit that went with the vacation request, where you see the hash marks of the area that would be vacated. Planning Division looked at this proposal and found no issue with what was being proposed, and ultimately, upon a development of these areas, should be a safer environment, and vacating these will assist the development for this area in the direction of the road system. Engineering commented and found it consistent with the Country Meadows. In 2009, Country Meadows was approved, and this alignment was proposed as part of that project, so this is going to follow the direction of that. It's also consistent and correspond with the direction of the transportation master plan, and as well identified that it would provide a safer environment. There's other details, the cross-sections within the staff report about this, about road section widths and whatnot, but I didn't go into that detail as far as this vacation request. Do you have any questions for me regarding this?
See none.
All right, thanks.
Were the applicant on this one, too, or no, we would not be? Does the applicant wish to speak?
I don't, I don't know if they're present, I didn't see, you don't wish to speak?
We're getting head shake, so.
They don't want to.
Shannon, is there anybody wishing to testify?
The applicant does have one question. If they, would they still be able to have the right to have a rebuttal following the testimony?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Okay.
Not wishing to speak, in opposition, Larry Allen Becker. My name is Larry Allen Becker, I live at 2990 North Genesec Court in the Meadows. I have used Staples Road to get to Chase for nearly four years. I do not believe it should be closed until the Grange Road is tied into Chase. I do understand that when heavy construction is taking place on Staples, it should be closed, but not for an extended period, not for an extended period for the convenience of the developers. So thank you very much. And also in opposition wishing to speak is Willie, Willie, is it Spicker? Spiker?
Spicker.
Spicker, please come forward and we'll let you talk. And just, if you'd give us your name again for the record, please.
Sure, Willie Spicker, I live at 1507 Staples Road, new guy in the city and everything. This is my first council meeting, so bear with me. I'm even more confused after listening to the presentation, is the road going to be closed or not? You know, and if it is going to be closed for some portion, when they were building my house, I used the dirt road that was there, anxiously awaited the paved road that's there now. It's a much easier access out on the Chase to the east for any business this way. During part of the paving process or shortly after it, there was concrete barriers blocking both ends of the road, and I don't know how the blocking is going to take place with this vacation request, but cars were still going around the blocks. So unless somebody's there to monitor that, I think the blocking is probably going to be ineffective and might cause some traffic issues, especially at the Chase-Staples intersection, not so much at the other end where it's actually in the neighborhood. So again, if the proposal is to close the road long-term while they build however many houses are going to go in there, I think that's a big inconvenience to us that live there. So that's my pitch.
Thank you very much, appreciate your taking the time.
Sure.
We only have the two, so now if the applicant would like to rebut or address those issues, please come forward, identify yourself, and name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Gordon Dobler, Tri-State Engineering. Wouldn't be a rebuttal so much as a clarification. The Country Meadows is built, it's platted, so as John said, that, there's a portion that goes out to Chase that would be used when Staples closed. Staples wouldn't probably be closed until Grange goes through, and that will happen with the North Chase Place, which is on your agenda tonight. So timing-wise, that's the order of how things would play out.
So a quick question for you then, sir. If the two comments that we've heard were concerned with the road being closed on extended period, for an extended period, from what you're saying, that probably would not take place, or there would be an alternative route open when that road closed?
No, it's my understanding Staples won't be closed until Grange is built, and then Genesec extends through.
Okay, thank you. John, you want to address that, too, please?
Yes, that's a true statement, that Staples Road is going to stay connected. Until such time, there's an alternative route. So the idea wouldn't be to remove a connection.
Okay. Any questions from council?
That's the only one I have.
I just have one comment. I'm just wondering if the people that just spoke in opposition heard you. It's a little bit hard to hear back there, right?
A little bit.
Okay, could you tell them again, John?
Yes, sir, thank you. So the, that connection that you seen, that was in orange, that was discussed, that Staples Road, that connection would stay until such time there's an alternative route. So at such time that the Genesec Loop was extended and the connection from Grange to Chase was established, that Staples Road portion would not be removed.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Any questions? With that, I would close the public hearing. We need a motion on this one, or is that?
I would move to approve the Staples Vacation, File Number VAC-17-01.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much, and thank you for those who shared their comments. Third public hearing tonight is JR Perk Zone Change, and with that, I'll open the public hearing. Tavis.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with the city of Pulse Falls. Tonight, I'm presenting the JR Perk Zone Change, File Number ZC-17-02. The owners of the property is Sandra Johnson, and the applicant is the JR Perk LLC. This evening, the council is being asked to review and approve the proposed zone change from limited commercial zoning to community commercial services. The project is located on North Idaho Street, across from the parking lot of Super One, essentially, there. Its address is 761 North Idaho Street, it's about 275 feet north of the intersection with East-Selteese Way. There, the property is about a quarter of an acre. Currently, it's a commercial use, it's a bar coffee shop. This map shows the existing zoning. The project is in the black crosshatching there. The pink is limited commercial zoning, the red is community commercial services, and then the orange and yellows and browns are various residential zoning up there that are on the north side of Mullen. Staff of Public Services Department found the proposal to be consistent with the goals and policies within the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the future land use map. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding environment, and it is also compatible with the adjoining street classifications of Idaho Street that the business fronts on, and then 8th Avenue, which is the side street there. This map shows the future land use map. This is from the comprehensive plan. So the red is commercial zoning, and the yellow is residential. So you can see that this is right in the middle of the red zoning, everything from Mullen Avenue South to the I-90 right away. There are some criteria for zone change, and zoning is assigned following consideration of street classification, traffic patterns, existing and future development, any community plans, and then geographic or natural features. Commercial and high-density residential zoning typically is assigned along streets with higher road classifications like Idaho Street or Mullen and Celteese. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as you proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban core. So as you head north of Mullen along Idaho, we get into more limited or neighborhood commercial or low-density residential. Regarding the transportation master plan, the change from limited commercial to community commercial services does not materially change the findings or recommendations within that plan. The existing use has already connected the city's water reclamation system, and so the zone change should not have an effect regarding the city's water reclamation system. The existing business has also connected the city's water system, and the proposed zone change should not have any significant impacts to the water system there. We received no comments from any other outside agencies. So do you have any questions of me at this time?
Questions of Tavis.
Al. Tavis, can you give us kind of an idea of what uses are different between limited commercial- commercial and CCS?
Yeah. So, limited commercial are, commercial uses that typically have lower traffic volumes, where people go and stay for a time, offices, maybe restaurants, things like that where you go and you stay for a while. Community commercial services have broader things. You have, you know, Walmart, so like regional, large, big-box things down to higher-intensity fast-food restaurants, coffee shops, or drive-throughs where you have high turnover of traffic. You know, every five minutes, there's, you know, 10 new cars in the parking lot or in the line. That's primarily the difference there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Linda?
Tavis, right there at Polston, kind of kitty corner from the hash marks, that road coming out, Super One is on the left, and then, you know, coming out Polston, going to the west. And it's real hard because Idaho is so busy there. Is there going to be any kind of traffic mitigation at that, at that spot, if this changes zone?
Not, not per this request or regarding with this project. There may be other things, traffic signals or traffic mitigation, that our engineering staff could answer if you'd like them to come up, but that is not associated with this project, if there is that.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know, Bill. Do you know what the transportation plan says right there for Polston, right across from Super One?
You know, long-term, Polston will probably become right turn in and out only as accidents increase through that area. So, that is the, it is difficult getting out of Polston and there. So, we have several things in the works. One of them was the Celtis Way project we spoke about last time that would circulate through there. So, we're going to try to keep everything as, operating for as long as we can, but indeed, Polston, as accidents increase or people are jumping out there, we'll probably restrict movements there to right in and out only.
And so, then this property would also be right in and out, right?
Ultimately, ultimately could be right in and out only as well. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to speak, or do you think? Nope. Getting a head shake out there. Anybody wish to testify?
We have none.
I'm going to assume that there's not going to be any rebuttals, so with that, I will close the public hearing.
I'd move to approve the JR Perk Zone Change, file number ZC-17-02.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Alloy?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Anderson?
Hi.
Motion passes. Next item up is unfinished business. Tonight, we have none, followed by citizens issue. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address this council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, would ask you to come forward, give your name, and we will give you, there we come. And if you are speaking, all I would say is just keep right on the timer, because we get.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
No pressure.
I'll be fine.
Name for the record, please.
My name's Kevin Daly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for allowing me to come up here and talk to you tonight. Real quick, recently, we found out, I live in Hunter's Glen neighborhood, and we found out that on, in Kiwanis Park, our neighborhood borders Kiwanis Park, we found out the easternmost border of Kiwanis Park, which has 11 houses bordering it, they're going to build a fence for, in the park that, I don't know how many years, at least 16 that I know of. There's a fence that's being proposed to be built. And today, I, well, I found out last week, today I called and I spoke to Mr. Fair, had a very nice conversation with him about it, and found out some things that I didn't know. The park is actually leased. I believe Kiwanis obviously must own it. And a part of the lease agreement is that the fence was supposed to be there originally, and now they're going to put it, now we're putting in a fence. The reason I'm here, my house doesn't border the fence. There's 11 houses that border the fence. Several of my neighbors are here that actually their houses border the fence or border the park. And so, they came, the surveyors came out, and they surveyed the land, and they're going to put in a fence. I have no idea. I've heard estimates $30,000 to $50,000 to put in a fence, which is going to be a quarter of a mile long, probably, thinking that there's got to be lots of ways to use money other than to spend it on a fence that appears to be unnecessary. It's been that way. But, like I said, I spoke to Mr. Fair. He was very nice. Apparently, if you have a lease and they want, if Kiwanis wants the fence, I don't know what we're going to do. But hopefully, there's other things that they can do as opposed to putting in a fence that appears to be unnecessary. There's two houses that currently that don't have a fence that borders the park. Most of fences are low, but everybody has a fence. So, I understand they might want their property line delineated and all that, but I don't understand why. There are only two houses, like I said, at the current time, that don't have a fence. One of the guy, one of the last house has encroached out into the park with his, with his grass and stuff, so, but he doesn't have a fence. So, I can understand having him put in a fence. I understand, as per the conversation, that they might, they're going to, they don't, they might be able to put gates. The people who own the property that border the park, their property values are going to be severely affected by any type of a fence that the city puts in. So, and indirectly, my property is affected, because if their property value goes down, my property value will go down too. So, but really, my main issue is having, building a fence is going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money that it doesn't appear to be necessary. And if there's a way to get around it, I think we should get around it. But, and I sent you all email today, and Mr. Wolf has, I haven't checked my email, but earlier I received your comment back, and I appreciate that. Like I said, I didn't realize there was a meeting tonight, and I would come in and address you right now, and hopefully, we can somehow, now that you know that there's an issue, that the fence won't get built. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. One of the reasons I hadn't responded to you yet is because.
Oh, I don't know.
No, I haven't, because I knew that, I was told that there would be folks here on this issue tonight.
Yeah.
And so, with council's indulgence and our legal council's indulgence, I would ask maybe Mr. Fair to give us a quick update.
This, this isn't a discussion item on tonight. I believe that he was planning on coming next meeting.
Yes, it was supposed to be an updating.
Okay. So, it's not that we're not paying attention. We hear you loud and clear, but at the next meeting, and just so everyone knows, that's why we have an attorney to keep me out of trouble. We can't, I can't get the input from staff on this one because it wasn't on the agenda. We have to notice it up.
Right.
So, at the next meeting, we will have an update on that, but we did hear your concerns, and I received a couple other emails as well. So, that's why I was waiting.
Yeah, I'm retired from 30 years in government, so I understand. I didn't expect, after, if I get an answer back, I'm happy. But if I, I didn't expect one today, and if I get one back, I'm more than happy. So, appreciate your time.
You bet. Anyone else? Please, I'm sorry, you got to come forward, name for the record, so we get you on the tape, please.
Mark Aldridge. I do live, my property line, and that's one of the reasons I built, bought my house there was to have the access to the woods. My only question is, no, you can't address the other issues, is I didn't even know there was a meeting tonight. How do I find out when your next meeting is, so we make sure we have some people here and myself?
This was a different month, because 4th of July, we always meet on the 1st and 3rd Tuesdays at 6:00.
1st and 3rd Tuesdays.
1st and 3rd Tuesdays at 6:00.
And so, the next meeting will be?
August 1st.
August 1st.
And then, if you want, you can look at the city's website, and they, I believe the agenda is posted on the website, so you can see what is going to be addressed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And if, and just so you know, if it's an item that's just up for review at that point, or for as a staff presentation, it's not open for public comment at that time, but you can get more information, you can feel free to contact us, and we'll get you all the answers we can.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Next item up is new business, and the first item is North Chase Place. Yes, feel free. Go ahead. You're welcome. There'll be more information presented in a couple weeks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner of City of Post Falls. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the North Chase Place subdivision. The staff report for that, it is case file S-17-06. The applicant is Willamette Valley Real Property. The owner is James R. Guy, and the requested action this evening is the city council is being asked to review the subdivision request and approve the proposed subdivision along with appropriate conditions if necessary. The project is located on the west side of Chase Road, north of Grange, what would be the future extension of Grange Avenue, as shown in this map and the red crosshatch. It is addressed at 3225 North Chase Road. It's approximately five acres, and currently, it is vacant. On June 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. The proposal in the subdivision is for 20 single-family residential lots with an average lot size of little over 6,600 square feet. Works out to be a density of four units per acre. This shows the surrounding zoning here. So, we've got the dark yellow that is primarily, it's on the east side of Chase Road, and down here, south of Staples. Dark yellow is R1, single-family residential. The paler yellow out here is R1S. We've got some, the brown is a residential mobile home park, and we've got some, so the purples at the south and north sides, there's some smart code zoning popping into the area. This shows the subdivision plan. North is to the left side of the screen there is shown with the north arrow down here at the bottom. This, so Chase Road is at the top, running north-south. At the south end of the proposed project is the future extension of Grange there, and then we've got Genesek Street coming north-south here with the lots. And working with the Cootney County Fire and Rescue, the applicant has modified the proposed fire access turnaround. This road would currently dead-end there, providing future connectivity to future subdivisions to the north property there. This will be a fire access. It'll be gated and locked with fire department access right here adjacent to Chase Road. It'll meet the fire department requirements for road surface and width, and it will be signed no parking fire lane for that. At future time, when the property of the north is ever subdivided and Genesek continues on, this fire access may no longer be needed, but it would remain as a pedestrian access, kind of a mid-block to this meandering trail that we see along here, along Chase Road. In Title 17 of the municipal code, there are subdivision review criteria. The first one is that there's adequate water supply in regards to quantity and quality. East Green Acres Irrigation District is the utility provider for this area. Second criteria is regarding the public sewage system, and that there's, the proposed project can accommodate the proposed sewer flows. City Post Falls has adequate capacity, and the layout of the sewer system is adequate. This just shows the existing sewer system prior to plating. This picture's a little bit old, but we've, but the existing city sewer system actually already goes on the south end of this property. And so, connecting, crossing Grange, so it's coming Grange flowing westerly up here. The third criteria is that the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The roadway alignment and cross-sections are appropriate. There will be no direct access from any of these lots to Chase Road or and/or Grange Avenue. The layout accommodates connectivity and future connectivity at that north end of the project. The fourth criteria is that any natural features, soil or topography have been identified, if there's any hazards or anything proposing, or potentially any incompatibleness. There's been no soil or topographical conditions identified as presenting hazards. The fifth criteria is that the area for the proposed subdivision is zoned for the proposed use. It's zoned appropriately. It's R1, single-family residential. All of the lots meet and/or exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards, and the project meets the minimum density. The sixth criteria is that the developers made adequate plans to ensure that the community as a whole isn't bearing undue financial burdens for this project, and the city handles that through annexation and impact fees, and those are placed upon building permits in there, when the building permit is issued for the individual residences. We received no other comments from outside agencies. And then, this is just all of those, the six criteria from the Title 17 of the municipal code, just all on one slide there, just for your benefit there. So, do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions of Tavis? Al?
Tavis, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Rob, but I'm curious about where's Genesek Road going if we develop north of this property? Is it going to curve out onto Chase, or is it going to go straight all the way up to, what is that, Foster?
Fisher.
Fisher? Fisher, yeah.
I can take a stab at this, and Rob can, if I misspeak or anything, come correct me. So, the proposed Genesek will go approximately in the middle of this project and then essentially dead-end. So, when this future five acres is developed, at that time, it, it will either connect out to Chase or go to Fisher. I don't have, do you have it? Okay. Yeah, so it'll be.
Either one or both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it basically, when that project, when that property comes in for a subdivision, they'll work with staff to see where we're at and what the connectivity as far as the transportation master plan and the comprehensive plan at that time is state.
Okay. I have a question for you. Couple weeks ago, we had a request for an R1 zone, same area, Council went R1S. Not too long before that, there was a small tract, five acres, I believe, that was approved R1.
This is it?
This is the one?
Is this the same one?
This is the one that was approved as R1. Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure, because I was, I was going to say if we approved one and then changed one, and I wanted to make sure this wasn't a different one.
That's the triangle piece below it, too.
Yes, this was called the Chase and Grange annexation.
Okay. Any questions of Tavis? You need a motion for us, from us tonight, then?
I would move to approve the North Chase Place, file number S-17-06.
Okay.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Anderson?
Hi.
Alloy?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up in our new business is the Hideaway Preliminary Planned Unit Development and Subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls. Presenting staff report for the Hideaway subdivision and PUD, case file S-17-06 and The applicant for this project is Halo Construction Group. The owners are Anthony and Carmy Ebers. This evening, the city council is being asked to review and approve the preliminary PUD and subdivision request, along with appropriate conditions if necessary. The project is located on East Mullen, excuse me, just to the east of Greens Ferry Road intersection, as shown in the crosshatch here. Its address is 2525 East Mullen. The property is approximately one and a half acres. Currently, there's a single-family residence on site, and there's no significant topology or vegetation. This shows the zoning. The zoning here is, the red is community commercial services, and the yellow is R1, single-family residential. To note, the project is surrounded by the Greens Ferry Landing PUD, and so, on the west side of this, there are apartments. On the north is a little community building and daycare. On the north is a little community building and daycare. And there's some smaller lot, single-family residential on the eastern side of this project. On June thirteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. For the subdivision, they're proposing twenty single-family residential lots with an average lot size of two thousand two hundred twenty-nine square feet. Works out to be a density of a little over thirteen units per acre. Regarding the PUD, this is a cottage housing-style development. It's a new thing for Post Falls here. They are proposing common area open space that's seven thousand two hundred twenty-nine square feet, which works out to be approximately eleven percent of the land there. They are asking for some exceptions to the R one zoning development there regarding lot area width, some setbacks, minimum floor areas, and the density. This shows the future land use from the comprehensive plan. So the red is commercial properties. The yellow is residential. But if you notice, along the north side of Mullen here, everything has kind of this gray crosshatching there. And that, in the comprehensive plan, states that it's appropriate for mixed use. So some commercial, some residential, but it's appropriate lands, even though it's identified as residential, is appropriate projects, properties fronting on Mullen Avenue to be a mix of uses. This is the preliminary layout for it. We've got Hideaway Loop. Mullen is at the bottom, south end of the screen here. So Hideaway Loop goes around, it'll be in a tract. That is going to be one-way and signed, no parking, it's fire lane there. We've got, most of the lots are at the perimeter, and then we've got four lots in the middle. And then the open space tract is, this space here is in tract B. The open space tract will have a mix. It'll have garden space. It'll have some grassy depressions that will act as swales, but they're not going to be the typical, you know, like three-feet-deep swales. They're going to be about a foot, a foot deviation from the asphalt level. And then there'll be some community parking area that will be built with permeable pavers. In the municipal code, Title eighteen for the planned unit development has some review criteria. The first one is that the project provides benefits that would not be achievable through compliance with normally required zoning standards and regulations. So some of that is the requested exceptions to the zoning with the, like, lot sizes and setbacks there. Number two, it's compatible with surrounding land uses, both existing and future. So we've got, on the south side of Mullen, we've got, directly across this, we've got an RV park down the street. On the other side of Greens Ferry, we've got the auto dealers, Walmarts, a little bit to the, to the east there. And as I previously, previously mentioned, to the west, immediate west of this project, there are the Greens Ferry Landing apartments and community building. And then on the west side is some smaller lot, single-family. So this kind of makes a transition from those apartments to the single-family as kind of being a smaller single-family, so not apartments, but not the smaller single-family there. Number three, it's in conformance of the goals and policies found within the Post Falls comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does state that Post Falls should encourage a mix of land uses and various housing types to accommodate different segments of the population there. Projects, planned unit development projects should provide open space and a minimum of ten percent is required. And as I previously stated, the project's about eleven percent there. The fifth criteria is the planned unit development should provide for the integrated and harmonious design and arrangement of buildings and uses. So some of what they're doing with the, with this project is that they are meeting the twenty-foot garage setback. So they're, each house will have a single-car garage and then twenty feet there, so they'll be providing two onsite parking spaces for residents. And with that, the garages are going to be set back a little bit and the house, part of the house and porches will be pushed forward and will be fronting, getting closer to the sidewalk and the private drive that everybody will access. And so that kind of can, can lead to a, kind of a community feel there with the citizens. They'll also be able to look upon the open space in the garden area. Municipal code regarding subdivisions in Title seventeen, so the first criteria is regarding water supply, quantity and quality. Ross Point Water District's the utility provider for this location. Criteria number two is regarding the public sewage system and City of Post Falls has adequate capacity to provide service to the proposed subdivision and the layout is adequate. The third criteria is the proposed streets are consistent with transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The roadway alignment and cross-sections are appropriate and none of the lots will have direct access to Mullen Avenue. They'll all have to have direct access to Hideaway Loop. Fourth criteria is regarding soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards on site, and neither of those have been identified as presenting any hazards to the project. Number five, the area proposed for subdivision is zoned appropriately and the use conforms to other requirements found within the code. It is zoned R one, single-family residential, so they are providing single-family homes. And then through the PUD request, they are asking for exceptions to some of those bulk and placement regulations for the R one's zoning. Number six is that the developers made adequate plans, that the community should bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services. And so there'll be annexation and impact fees will be placed upon the building permits and paid upon building permit issuance. We received no comments from other agencies. And this is just the five criteria from Title eighteen in the municipal code regarding planned unit development review criteria. So at this time, do you have any questions for me?
Comment?
Yes.
You know, this is one of those things where you've got an R one zoning and we're going with PUD and we're getting thirteen units per acre. Pretty high density. I guess flip side of it, could be worse, could be multifamily, could be up to eighteen. I understand, I guess, the, maybe the benefit of the attraction it would have in providing a different option. And I don't know if these, the intent is to rent these out or for people to buy them and live in them. But one of the concerns, when I read through the minutes of the planning and zoning, and I agree with a couple of the comments, one of the concerns I have is when you've got five exceptions, that, that's a lot. Now, it doesn't mean that I don't think it's probably a decent development or maybe the proper way to go or a good option, but my concern would be density and the number of exceptions that were contained in the project. So that's just my feeling, but I don't get to vote. Lynda?
Tavis, I didn't see anything in the, the staff report. Is it gated?
I'm not aware of any proposed gate at this time.
Didn't Mr. Olson do something similar to this, like up off of Seringa, where the homes were very, very small and they were, they were almost touching?
Was that up in Fieldstone?
No, it was...
The crossings?
I, I don't know if that was it or not. It's, they're very small, little rancher-style houses with, I mean, they're, they're almost touching.
Almost a rowhouse.
Yeah. It looked, I think that's gated, but that's sort of what this concept reminded me of. Yeah.
I think in some, in some regards, it's, is it not similar to the project on Governor Wayne Cordelane, where you drive down on the east side of the road where it's, I mean, very, very small, two stories, et cetera?
Yeah, they are proposing some single-story and some two-stories with this. So there is a mix and they have, they did hire an architect, so everything is, it's not like stock building plans. They are architecturally designed and they kind of are having a theme for, throughout the whole project. There's not going to be a mix of houses with different builders building things. It's going to be a mishmash or anything.
Joe?
Can you go back to the map of the proposal? So the street with there does not permit parking, correct?
Correct.
How many community spaces are they proposing or has that even come up?
They're proposing ten, so it would be five, five in this area right here and then five on this side. And that would be to the, you know, to the benefit of residents and guests of the residents.
Maybe, I don't know if Rob or Chief would want to comment, but I looked at this and I just saw a parking nightmare, I think trying to keep people from parking on the street.
Foresay. Who would enforce it?
Right. Well, it's, exactly.
It's a private road. Is it a private road?
It's a private road, yes. Yeah, it's a private road, one-way, and the fire marshal wanted it signed, no parking, fire lane, and so then that's where we worked with the applicant to provide community parking.
So that would Chief Merritt have to enforce that or how's that work?
It's not PD, you're correct.
It's private road.
So it'd be up to the homeowner association.
So, yeah, with, if each lot has two theoretical spots, but one person's going to back out so the other one can get out, I think the road's going to get used a lot for a parking spot. And that's, that's what I saw a lot of when I saw this. I don't know if anybody else saw that or not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, some, you know, the houses are all going to be smaller. The, the two-stories are a little over eight hundred square feet. The single-stories are a little over six hundred square feet. That doesn't include the garage space, that's just like the livable space. So with there, you're not going to have, you know, five and six fam, you know, large families living there. It's just naturally, it's going to be smaller families, empty nesters.
I've seen five or six people in small apartments before, so.
Yeah.
Al, were you done, Joe?
Yeah, that's Mike's turn.
Yeah, I had two big concerns and I guess came from, some of it came from the planning and zoning, too. I mean, private road, we can't really do anything to keep people off it, which then makes it, to me, a fire hazard. So that was the biggest thing, was the parking. I just don't think there's adequate parking. And if, if you're counting a garage on a eight hundred square foot house as parking, it's going to be full of junk, is what it's going to be full of. They're going to park their one car in the driveway and one car out on the street. The other thing that concerned me, and I'm not, I read through this, I guess it's permissible, but they're proposing almost eight thousand square feet of common area, eleven percent, which is then almost all taken up by parking. So there really isn't, other than that little community garden or whatever, there really isn't any community. There's no space here. I'm thinking if there's kids that are living in this area, number one, there's no yard to play in, there's no, there's nothing for anybody.
Um, so...
I guess my biggest concern is the fire issue. I mean, if somebody wants to live in that area with nothing, then that's up to them. The biggest issue I have is the parking that then creates a fire issue.
Yeah, and, and we, we worked with the fire marshal and the applicant to resolve the fire marshal's concerns, and that's kind of what we came up with there, to the satisfaction of the fire marshal. Regarding the open space, this is from the definition section of the municipal code, just an area substantially undeveloped, which may or may not be open to the public. Open space may include, along with the natural and environmental features, water areas, swimming pools, tennis courts, utilities, and any other approved recreational or support facilities.
So is parking considered a support facility?
Staff has felt that in this, in this instance, that it can fit under that definition.
Lynda?
Tavis, can you go flip one side up where you see the building envelopes?
Yeah, so this, this is, is just kind of a, it's the same lot layout with the building footprint shown on, on the lots there. We've got the community garden space in the middle here, the community parking, and the grassy areas right here and up here.
How big is that community garden? How, how big is that? How many feet is that?
That, I'm not sure. Oops, excuse me. This, right here, the whole tract, this whole area is, was seven thousand three hundred square feet approximately.
So it's about two thousand square feet for the, for the garden?
And it looks like they all have little yards, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, I like something like this if you could control it somehow. If you could keep, keep it to like one car per unit or no parking on the street, I think it would be nice, but I just think this is just going to be like a, like, I don't, I hate to use the word ghetto, but a little like mini ghetto. I just, you're going to be weaving in and out of cars.
Really, and I see, I see it as people that are going to be leaving for the winter and only here in the summer, and that's what I see it as. I see it more as a, like a, you know, snowbird thing.
That's what I mean, if you could control that, that'd be great. But I think you're going to have, half of them are like that and the other half are families that are just trying to get into, you know, a place to live and create issues for the other people.
I see it as almost a transition. I think you, you mentioned that, people who are looking to get into a home and maybe this is the first home, or you could, other people that are, are going to snowbird and just want a spot to call home while they're here for the few months. And again, you know, it's private road, it's not, I don't mean to be flippant, it's not the city's responsibility to control that private road if it, since it is private. But I will guarantee you, it will be the city that gets phone calls when people are parked on the road and blocking access, et cetera. And then again, you go back to the question of fire, and I've seen it happen on narrow streets where fire trucks can't get down it. That being said, if our fire marshal has bought off on it and accepted it, it's hard for me to question it.
But he's bought off on it with the requirement that there's no parking on that street, which then, who's going to, nobody can control that.
Then you have to have a homeowner association that'll be willing to step up and enforce it. Yeah, if they would. Word?
Air?
Sir?
Couple thoughts. First, you're having a great discussion, don't want to curtail that at all. I want to remind you that your decision needs to be based on the criteria for a PUD and for, for the subdivision. So if the concerns that you're having, you need to tie those back in somehow into the relevant criteria that's contained in our code. One caution on parking, they're, are meeting our parking standard. They're providing their amount that we do require in our code, so that would be fairly difficult to bootstrap that into a denial where they're, they're meeting the standard that we have established. The other caution, I suppose, for you is you are also constrained by the record that was created for you at the planning commission. This isn't a public hearing, so you're given the record that the planning commission created. So your analysis should be driven by the evidence that came in. And I think that was the, the reference to the fire marshal. They've essentially given you what their position is, that's in the record, so you're basing your decision on the information that comes to you in the packet and then reviewing that against the, the criteria that we have established.
Still dry?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I think the conversation's over.
Yep. Okay, nothing else to talk about. Well, we saw the information. We're being told, and I would agree, it meets the requirements as established.
No, I'm not telling you it meets the requirements. That's not my job, that's your job.
But that's what Pete and Z brought it forth, that, you know, fire issues, parking, et cetera, and...
And you're certainly free to disagree with them and interpret the evidence differently. You could look at the same set of facts and come to a different conclusion. You just need to be able to articulate that, given the criteria that we have adopted.
Sure. How would council like to act?
I believe that they have met the criteria, so I'm going to move to approve the Hideaway Preliminary Planned Unit Development and Subdivision File Number P dash one seven dash zero one slash S dash one zero dash, all right, excuse me, S dash one seven dash zero seven.
Can I ask a question?
I think we need a second if we're going to get one prior to discussion. We have a second. Mr. Wolf?
Lynda, I understand what you're saying, but do you feel that they've met the requirement of ten percent open space by definition? Do you feel like that parking fits into that? Because I mean, I could make a case for they did not meet the requirement of ten percent because that parking is not part of acceptable use of open space.
And Tavis said that the, the staff felt it was.
Okay. Yeah, I, when you said that, my thought was, that was mentioned, that staff felt, when I asked that question, parking would qualify. Staff's taking the position that it does.
It does. Okay.
We don't have to agree with staff, right?
No, you don't. That's, I just wanted to jump in.
Yeah.
You are ultimately the, the fact-finder here, so you get to interpret that code. It's, it's not as clear as all of us, I think, would like in the iteration that you'll be seeing. Hopefully, it's clearer in the coming months, but... be seeing, hopefully it's clearer in the coming months, but you're, again, reviewing the code, you're reviewing the evidence that came in, you can reach a different conclusion, staff's point of view is just one point of evidence for you to consider.
In that case, my concern would be on future PUD requests, if parking counts as open space, then somebody can ask for a PUD amendment on an R1, and build something really tight and have a two-acre parking lot, and call that open space.
Well, that's where we, we get to make that decision.
So that's, I would, I would disagree with staff's assessment based on what could happen in the future, and based on this, there, there's, there's no open space, if there's a car parked in it, it's not open.
Further comments? Motion's second. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wolf?
Nay.
Motion passes, three to two. Anyway, it was a good discussion, Mr. Wilson, thank you for keeping us on point, but I think all comments that were brought up were head and merit, and I appreciate the discussion. Next item, ordinance as a resolution, first is the ordinance on the property exchange with Cootney County.
Move to place the ordinance at property exchange with Cootney County on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion's second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, authorizing the exchange of an approximate 1.08 acre parcel of real estate, of real property owned by the City of Post Falls located at 214 East Railroad Avenue for an approximate .60 acre parcel of real property owned by Cootney County, Idaho, located at the intersection of Spokane Street and Railroad Avenue without additional consideration.
Move to approve the ordinance property exchange with Cootney County to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion's second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up is a resolution dealing with fiscal 2000, fiscal year 2018 tentative budget.
Move to approve the resolution fiscal year 2018 tentative budget.
Second. Motion's second, further discussion. Shannon?
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up, under administrative staff reports, East Seltice pedestrian update. Mr. Flowers, this is for you.
Honorable Mayor, Council President Wilhelm, members of the council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Back at your last meeting in June, a question was posed regarding the safety of the Seltice Way crossings at Vest Street and at Graffiti Street. City staff has met involving members of the Urban Forester, Street Department, Police Department, and Engineering. We have taken a look, and there have been some changes since the meeting in June. First, I wanted to show you what the crossings look like today and what the general conditions are. At the intersection of Seltice Way and Vest, this is where the Ace Hardware and McDonald's is located, the, we have a five-lane road, 35 mile-per-hour speed limit, and between 12,000 to 15,000 vehicles per day cross this section of road. In the past six years, there have been three collisions in this area, taking those vehicles per day, that's about 28 million vehicles have gone through that area in the last six years, and there have been three collisions, none of them involving pedestrians. As you can see in the picture, the crosswalk is in place with those bars across the roadway, and it's a little bit far away, but there's an orange flag to bring additional highlights to the crosswalk sign. Going up a block to the intersection of Seltice Way and Graffiti Street, the general conditions are still the same with the road configuration, number of vehicles, there were eight collisions in the past six years at the intersection of Seltice Way and Graffiti. Back in 2011, almost, well, two days more than six years to the date, interestingly, there was a collision that involved a pedestrian, pedestrian was injured, it occurred at nighttime, the traffic light that's in place to illuminate the roadway was not on at that time, and the driver of the vehicle was cited for being drunk and inattentive driving, so we had some mitigating circumstances at that time. Since the meeting in June, in June, the road had been striped, but the crosswalks had not been striped at that time. Historically, there were just bars across the street that were a solid line all the ways across. We have changed the striping, and that was done by the Street Department last week to put in more of a keyboard-style crosswalk, those tend to be a little bit more visible. Staff has looked and verified that the signs that are out there comply with the manual and uniform traffic control devices in terms of the correct signage, and also that the visibility is sufficient enough so that a vehicle driver can see the signs, perceive whether or not a pedestrian is there, react and come to a stop if necessary. Our Street Department added additional flags to provide additional reinforcement to the visibility of the signs, and they have, as I previously mentioned, remarked the crosswalks. In discussions with the Police Department and Street Department on-site today, the Police Department informed me that they are going to be doing an emphasis, or they've called it a sting patrol, in that area within the next couple of weeks, and they will also be hitting some other intersections around the community where there have been some complaints, just to increase enforcement and awareness of the general public to the crosswalks and providing safety. In general staff's opinion, from the patrol sergeant I was talking with, the Street Department, and myself, we felt that the markings that are out there are visible, that there is a fairly low number of pedestrians that use the area, and historically, there is not a form of collision going on with pedestrians that any additional measures would warrant increased safety. So what we would like to do is continue with what is out there, maintain it, monitor it, and make sure that stays safe.
Thank you, Rob, good information, appreciate your efforts on that, any questions or comments?
I've noticed that somewhere, I can't, I'm trying to pick my brain here, I've just seen that some crosswalks have been flashing. Put some in.
We have five intersections in the city with different types of beacons in place. We have one on Idaho and 15th, and then a crosswalk over at the high school, which is an eight-inch amber light which blinks, and those are pedestrian-activated by a push button. We have three locations, Centennial Trail Crossing on Spokane Street, the intersection of Compton and Seltice Way, and then on Mullen Avenue over by the Surgical Hospital, they have what's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Current status is, there is some litigation going on with the Federal Highway Administration, and those rectangular rapid flashing beacons are not allowed for any new installations in these, you know, anywhere in the United States, but in particular, for us here in North Idaho, the only jurisdictions that are allowed to continue to put them in, with the caveat that if litigation goes the wrong way, they'd have to remove them, are the cities of Cordelain, City of Sandpoint, and Idaho Transportation Department on Idaho Transportation Department highways. The eight-inch beacons could be put in, their effectiveness, in my opinion, is a little bit less than the rapid flashing beacon, because an eight-inch beacon, in order to be compliant with the manual and uniform traffic control devices, blinks about for one second in length every other second, so it's a slow blink that doesn't catch a lot of people's attention, except at nighttime. Our street superintendent has been out here a couple more times than I have since the crosswalks have been striped at nighttime, and he says that right now with the current markings, they light up really well from the headlights of cars during the dark hours.
Once again, great information.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mayor comments, the only comment I have is, I did receive a call, weeds causing visibility at the intersection of 16th and Idaho, and when I started to mention that to Shelley, she told me that it had already been addressed, so I think, Dave, if you want to say anything, I think it's been fixed, though, correct?
16th and Idaho.
In process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. The area that we're talking about, just for counsel's reference, is the realignment of 16th into 15th, and it's this section in here that is causing the issue. That's currently owned by Hallmark Homes, have been in touch with them, and they do have a contractor who's supposed to be maintaining it, they were not aware that it wasn't being done, that person is gone for the next two days, but they will be addressing it, and they assured me that it would be corrected within the week.
Good, well, thank you, it's always nice when you ask a question, they say, well, it's actually being addressed as we speak, so I will reach back out to the citizen who called, and I appreciate your taking care of them.
Thank you.
Counsel comments?
I just want to say that I was talking to Russ about the, the new lost mines property that we extended past Camelan, and my wife and I had an opportunity to go back there and spend a Sunday morning, and I just wanted to throw that out to the public, that that's open to the public now, and it's a great piece of property to, to hike on and kind of explore the, it's amazing that you can have something that close to, to home back there, so I encourage people to go check it out.
Thank you. Linda?
I would just like to send a thanks out to the Parks Department, I had a couple citizens get ahold of me right after Post Falls Days was over on Monday, and had, had went down to the park and said, you couldn't even tell anything had gone on there, that the, it was so clean and looked so nice, so very good job.
Good job.
Thank you for that, very good job.
Anyone else? I understand we do need an executive session tonight.
Correct.
How long?
15 minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code 74-2061A to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Further, that no action will be taken, and this session will last approximately 15 minutes.
Second. Motion's second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Called a meeting back to order, are there any, any motions to come forward?
Move for adjournment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.